Can I fill out there's a call to the public?
Not this meeting.
So then we'll go on to discussion items. And the first one is a board appointment of Mr. Omar Villa. Terrible one time ago. Well, could you tell us a little bit? Introduce yourself to the booth.
Well, good morning. My name is Omar Villa. I come here very pleased to be here. It's come full circle for me. I used to be a nerd. I'm a nerd at heart. So, working at the library, being a member of the library board is great. One of the things that, while in college, I worked at libraries. I worked at the Arizona Western College Library, I worked at the University of Arizona Maine Library, the Science Library, and the Architecture Library. So, coming here and working with the library board is really great. In fact, she's not here right now, but I was actually gonna be, get my major in library science, but I needed a job, so I had to go out and get a job before I could do that. I was a probation officer for 20 years, juvenile probation officer. For nine and for 11 years, I ran the Juvenile Detention Center here in Santa Cruz County. So, coming here, I've had the pleasure of working with some of the staff at the library that are working with the youth, which is great. I really enjoy doing that. So if you ever need me again, any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Very happy to have you, and it's always exciting to have people from our community that have been working within our community throughout the county, dedicated to the public library system, my love. And number two, Sonoyta Library Building, Juanita.
Well, I have been away, so I haven't been at the Sonoyta Library for three weeks, but I did send an email to Karina and to Denise. I don't know if you were able to prepare that to show the plan or not. No? Okay. Well, it was a suggestion by the clerk up there. Tiffany got a, and we had been talking about the layout of the library, the Sonoyta Library, and the suggestions were to create a children's center. Have you all been there? You've all been to the, yeah. If you know where the books are now, there's about three or four shelves of books, and where they are, the plan would be to move the books out into the empty central area and have that be a children's section. And as you come into the library, to the left is where the desk is, because that's where I think the phone and the hookup for the computer are. Unfortunately, every time you open the door, anything on the desk blows away. And so the plan would be to put it back where it used to be, toward the back wall, and that way, when the door opens, you see someone come in, but the wind isn't taking all your papers away. So, and then in the center right now, there's some very small tables for children. They could be moved into the children's section and then have larger furniture when that is forthcoming. And I think Denise and Karina know probably more about that. With the new budget, we may be able, maybe, have some furniture in that central area, and more shelves, and more books. So, thank you.
Thank you, Juanita. Brian?
Thank you, Juanita. I would just encourage, this should have been on the previous, the first item on the agenda, but Omar, it would really be great for you to become familiar with the county libraries, if you haven't had a chance to. I don't know what part of the community you live in, but get out to Sonoyta, Túbec, and Rio Rico, of course, and for all the members of the board.
And I just wrote that down, the library county. I'd be more than happy to do that.
Just a visit. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I did forget that first part. Yeah, yeah. Let's go back to number one. I'm so sorry. And then we'll come back to you, Juanita. So, Santos, would you have any comment about Omar, or to Omar?
Well, I'm very pleased and happy Omar being part of this board and continue, continue working together.
Yeah, and I've met Santos.
And building community.
So, it's great now for working with you.
Excellent. I'm very happy. Mr. Delsi, do you have any comments?
Friends is gonna be meeting after this meeting at the library, and we continue to supply the small libraries throughout the community. In particular, I noticed this morning that, and Ana, you were able to confirm for me that the small library that we had at the Quino Park has been changed to one.
Mr. Delsi, we're on number one, the board appointment of Omar Villa. Do you have any comments about number one?
No, no, not whatsoever.
Okay. Christian?
Oh, so yeah, welcome, Omar. And I was aware of your presentation at the Nogales Public Library with the youngsters there, and I thought it was great. So, yeah.
And Juanita?
Yes, welcome on board.
Thank you.
Nice to have someone with your background to join us.
Excellent. So, we'll move on to Juanita's comments about the Sonoyta Library. Again, we'll start with Brian again.
Well, Juanita, it sounds like what you're thinking about moving the stacks and creating is exactly what was on the original architect's plans. So, it sounds that that's the way it is. Probably, if Denise were present, she would say, well, we're waiting to see if the budget's approved and the furniture that she's requesting is budgeted for, and I would imagine that's probably the next step over there.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Could you speak louder?
I thought I was speaking right into the mic. Yeah, we're probably waiting to see if Denise's budget is approved, because I know she's requesting funds to buy furniture for that facility. And maybe if she comes back, she could, I mean, the budget's not approved yet, so we're all just waiting for that.
No comments.
Do you have any comments with Juanita's presentation?
No.
Stan?
So, yeah, I was there at the Sonoyta Library on, that's Friday. And so, yeah, I agree with what you were saying about moving that desk back and moving the smaller tables and chairs for the kiddos. Yeah, because it kind of takes that whole space, but I think it's a good idea, yeah.
Nothing, just looking forward to going to the library.
I'm really excited about the idea about the children's section of the library. And I have, through the board reports, I have an idea about the children's section of all of our libraries. Yes, yes. Thank you. So, we'll move on to number three, Rio Rico Library Expansion. Brian?
Thank you. Well, I really need Denise to be here to discuss this, so I propose we table this until the following meeting.
So, what do I do? Do I just wait for her to come in and vote to skip it?
Until she walks in?
No, she doesn't have to be here. I mean, I'm making a motion that we table this until
Okay, so I-
Until the July meeting. There's a motion.
You made a motion?
To table this item until the July meeting.
And is there a second? Okay. There's a motion, a second. Does everybody approve?
Aye.
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 Okay, so it passes. Ed Delsi, thank you, thank you. So, we will table that item for our next board meeting. Item four, Ed Delsi, this is you.
I'll just repeat what I said. Earlier, the friends is meeting after this meeting at the library to get a clearer report, and we continue to supply the neighborhood level library kits that we have, and the changes that were made over at the Quino Park this morning when I stopped by to replenish the books. I learned from Ana that it's been moved from there to a more recreation center here in Nogales. And it's addressing more children's focuses as supply. But the other adult community distribution of books, we continue to do that, and Friends is very supportive of it.
Thank you. Mr. Villa, do you have any comments on Mr. Delsi's Friends presentation?
Oh, not at this time.
Thank you. Juanita?
No, thanks, Ed. I'll see you at the meeting.
Christian?
No questions.
Santos?
No questions.
Brian?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So, item number five, Brianna is not here, so do we table that one too? Okay, is there a motion to table item number five for our next meeting?
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve of the minutes of the April 10th meeting, because we have them attached to our agenda.
Oh, okay.
But not the minutes to the May 8th meeting, because that is not included. So, my motion is to approve of the minutes of the meeting of April 10th, 2024.
Before we approve, I have a correction. Marva's signature is on these minutes. I don't think she's involved with the minutes anymore. I mean, she's not on board, right? Okay. Oh, okay.
I still approve them with, as corrected?
The recommendation should come from the secretary of the school in the past.
And who's the secretary? Oh, okay, so then, what do I do?
If that's the only thing, I would suggest approve April's meeting.
So, the motion would be to approve the minutes from April 10th on the condition that the signature be changed from Marva to Brianna from now on.
A second motion?
Okay. Does everybody approve?
Aye.
Anybody not approve? Okay, the motion passes. So, we'll move on to board reports, current events. Summary must be brief, and there cannot be any proposal, discussion, deliberation, or legal action taken. Let's start with Christian. Board reports? Have you-
Regarding-
Visiting, you know, any of our libraries?
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, yeah. I went blank there for a minute. So, I know that, so like I said, I've, I myself have visited the Sonoyta Library and the Nogales Library. And I was offered to possibly do some, some events with the youngsters. And so, I'm thinking about taking, you know, taking that on.
Excellent.
If possible, yeah. So, yeah, that's-
Thank you, thank you. Santos, do you have a board report?
Nothing right now.
Okay, okay. Mr. Villa?
All reports.
Okay, Juanita, do you have a board report?
Well, I've already given mine on the Sonoyta Library.
Oh, okay. And Mr. Delsi?
Nothing more to add.
Brian?
Nothing.
So, I have a short one that we're just starting, we're just hatching this little egg, and it's, again, through the grants, through the Friends. We want to start a program, and I've met with Karina, the Assistant Director of the Library, and Laura, the children's section of the library, about creating a program called Books and Brain Food. And I've discussed it with Santos Yescas, and he is going to help us partner with the food bank and to be able to do training for our parents on reading to their children. And we want to get, through Books Save Lives, books into the homes of our kids, especially birth through five-year-old students, our babies, our toddlers, and our preschool-age students, especially the ones that two out of three can't get into preschools. You know, if they get into preschools, they might be, have home visitation specialists for an hour a day, so we want the library to be a place where we can support our parents and our families that don't have access to preschools. And so, I'm really excited about starting that program. But we will move on to Library Director's Report. Which is right here.
And I wanted to bring the board's attention back to our library card contest. We are still promoting, we will be delivering, staff will be delivering throughout the community the little pamphlet, and I know staff has, did you guys already give the flyers again to the board? Did you guys bring some? We'll email them to you, so you guys can pass them out throughout the community in Sonoyta, in Patagonia, in Rio Rico, and here in Nogales. I think it's very important that somebody in the community might win, and the library card for, throughout the county, is going to be their design. I think that's very important. Polaris Training, we are gonna start training three hours a day, twice a week, in two weeks. So, we're gonna get very busy, and we're also gonna have our outreach events included in that. We are gonna be, the library's gonna be participating in the Nogales High School Back to School, not the Nogales High School, Nogales Unified School District Back to School events, and I will be inviting some of the board members to join us on that day. We will also be, for the first time, at the Rio Rico Back to School event, and I hope some board members are available for that as well. Budget update, we have a special session, the mayor has a special session tomorrow, and I will update you all on everything, but so far, so good. Everything that was asked for is in the budget, and it will probably be passed. That will include the shelves for Rio Rico, new carpeting rugs for the Sonoyta Library, shelves included, tables, chairs, everything that is needed over there too, as well as for Túbec. That will also include a new security system, upgrade to the security system at the Nogales Library as well. And to the summer reading programs, I will have staff talk about those. Karina, if you want to go ahead and start?
Yeah, good morning. So, we had a kickoff during May of the summer reading program at each library. Each library is doing amazing with kickoffs of the program. We had in Nogales and Rio Rico, Túbec is doing as well with children's and adult programs, and Sonoyta as well. So, staff is working hard during the summer. We also have here Victor, who's gonna share a little bit of the teens' summer program.
Bueno, les voy a hablar en español. Buenos dias. Nomás aquí para que sepan, nosotros tenemos actividades siempre cada mes. Les voy a pasar unos flyers para que vean más o menos las actividades que estamos viendo. Son dos flyers, exactamente la misma dinámica, nomás para que vayan sabiendo. La semana pasada tuvimos side-eye. Hubo asistencia como ocho muchachos que vinieron, y dos de ellos fueron acompañados de sus madres. Esta consistió en que los muchachos hicieran pintaron sus camisetas, y vi unas morralitos como mochilitas que también las hicieron side-eye. Pues los muchachos se fueron en diferentes horarios. Por lo regular, yo lo puse entre las 12 y adelante. Esa fue la primera actividad. La segunda actividad es esta semana, están pintando las ventanas de la biblioteca. Ya han asistido, empezó el día de ayer. Han asistido entre seis muchachos, más o menos. Ya van como tres dibujos que tenemos ahí en la biblioteca de parte de los muchachos. Todavía no han terminado, quedaron de venir esta semana para seguir terminando los dibujos. Eso es por de parte de toda esta semana. La siguiente semana, me parece que van a crear una lámpara de lava. Pues la temática es más o menos así como hippie. Entonces, lámpara de lava, side-eye, todas estas actividades van como más o menos relacionadas con eso. Entonces, ya después de que creen su lámpara de lava, voy a repetir la actividad que se hizo en diciembre, que hubo una posada. No va a ser posada, pero va a haber fiesta, se van a entregar pizza, sabritas, botana, música. Posiblemente se cierre el área de muchachos como ahora en diciembre, dependiendo del número de muchachos que vayan y asistan. La actividad consiste, yo la inventé, se llama Encuentra el Libro, la actividad. Es en donde yo primeramente les explico a los muchachos cómo se busca, cómo encontrar un libro. Entonces, para que poco a poco se vayan acercando ellos y que sepan cómo trabajamos nosotros, no? Que de esta forma se encuentra el libro. Se empezó con los non-fiction, y ahora ya les expliqué cómo, y ahora son con los ficción. Algo los libros de los ficción, ya les voy a explicar más o menos cómo se buscan. Y la dinámica es de que yo les voy a escribir en un pizarrón varios, como cinco, más o menos cinco libros. Voy a voltear el pizarrón, y es cuando ellos empiezan a tomar fotos. Es lo que por lo regular hicieron, no? Y ya salen corriendo pues para buscar el libro, y ya cuando vengan con el libro, se les va entregando un premio. Esa actividad a mí me gustó mucho, estuvo muy dinámica, muy suave. Los muchachos pues aprendieron a encontrar el libro, y eso sería como la culminación de esto. Cabe resaltar que le di unos papelitos a cada semana. Ellos tienen la opción de leer un libro o no, entonces se le voy a poner una estrellita. Si esta semana fue, entregaron un libro, yo lo único que les pido es que me explique nada más de qué trata el libro. Entonces, ya con eso, yo ya les pongo la palomita, y por cada palomita que ellos tienen, están participando en dos rifas. En una, en la rifa de un telescopio, y en la otra de un microscopio. Y vamos a ver qué más puede haber, de momento es lo que hay. Pues a mí me ha parecido muy bien, pues los muchachos, he estado viendo que ya es otro público. Porque los muchachos que me vienen regularmente, no están viniendo. Están viniendo otros muchachos nuevos, porque los de la escuela, por lo regular, yo tengo, los muchachos que van, son los que están aquí cerquita de la escuela. Y esos, como ya no hay escuela ahorita, están viniendo otros muchachos. Entonces, tengo que checar bien cómo se está manejando, qué dinámicas puedo hacer para jalar a los mismos muchachos, si es que pueden venir, o si no a los otros muchachos que están aquí, para ver qué se puede hacer. También tengo, pues ahora sí que quisiera dar gracias a dos personas, en especial, que me han ayudado con las actividades. La primera, pues Santos Yescas, muchas gracias, me ha apoyado con varias de las actividades aquí. Me ha apoyado con plantas, me ha traído a Lilia Ruiz, y ella ha dado clases. Tuve el apoyo hace poquito también de Santos, que me dio una plática acerca de del crédito, y en donde asistieron más o menos muchachos. Y también a Omar Villas, Villa. Pues muchas gracias, estoy muy agradecido, porque también vinieron muchos muchachos, donde vinieron y platicaron, estuvieron muy atentos, le hicieron preguntas. Omar habló sobre reclutamiento. Y pues, próximamente, estoy esperando a ver la confirmación de Christian, para ver qué se puede hacer en el área de música. Y próximamente, estamos viendo, estamos trabajando, estoy muy contento pues aquí con las actividades que están haciendo, y esas son las actividades que están ahorita para el summer reading program.
Thank you, Victor, and just a little, just to, I mean, it's, the first time we had the teen program, the summer program, was last year, and Victor gets all the credit right there, because he has, he has, some people have ways with, he has the way, he's the teen whisperer at our library system, that's what he is. He just, they just go to him, they just, and I love that. It's really inspiring, it inspires me, I think it inspires all staff as well. And they feel safe with him, I think that's a big thing right now in our community. And I know we're starting the teen program over in Rio Rico, we're gonna continue in Túbec, and I know Tiffany's gonna start something in Sonoyta. So, as long as our teens feel safe, and every time, it's a different crowd, and I love that. And I mean, if we're able to empower the youth, that's the whole point of the library system as well, then let's do it. And if Victor calls you and, you know, let's do a program, say yes. I know, thank you, Mr. Villa, thank you, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Yescas, and let's keep going. I mean, this is great. We have our teens, we're getting adult programs in too. I know I'm applying for the grant for healthy communities in the adult population in the county. So, I mean, that's what the library system's about, so, thank you, Victor. Lava lamps are fun. I used to, I'm gonna age myself, but I did them in, I had them in middle school. I had my groovy period, so I'm gonna be doing one, and I invite all of you to come on down.
Thank you very much. Brian, do you have any questions, comments about the Library Director's Report?
Not at this time, thank you.
Santos?
No, I just say kudos to Victor for all the work that he's been doing with the teens. And also, there's a lot of opportunities, so we can connect with other summer camp, with Zero Stress, they have a good camp, maybe you can participate, and let them, they know what is happening in the library, and how they can interact with the library too. So, it's a good opportunity. So, I will give you the information another bit, okay?
Ed?
Congratulations on the work that you've been doing with the youth, and I hope that everything will go as scheduled for the summer program. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian?
Yeah, I also want to congratulate Victor, he's done a wonderful job, and it is his job. You can just tell that you light up when you talk about it. So, I know it's not just your job, I know you're enjoying it, and I've seen you too, so, congratulations. And I think we are gonna move forward with the music, excuse me, with the music.
Thank you. Juanita? For that report, I think the music sounds wonderful. I did wonder about the adult, you're talking about adult programs?
Yeah, we already, we're gonna have a Zumba class on Friday at the Nogales Library. I am applying for a health grant for, through the Arizona State Library, that's what the call was about. So, I do want to bring more programs for adults.
First of all, thank you, Victor, for making me a part of your program, and congratulations, you're doing a great job. Anything that I can do personally to help you out, please ask. I'd be more than happy to help you out with all this stuff. I also enjoy working with teens, I worked with teens for 20 years, and it's, I enjoy that. So, if you need me, let me know. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations on everything you're doing. I think it's so exciting that you're asking, you know, from my school and about telescope, or participation in the program, and the fact that you have different young people coming in all the time, and, you know, that that population is growing and changing, and the word is getting around. It's really exciting. And so, you know, when I see these young people and participating, and feeling, as you say, safe, safe in the library, it is really important, and so, congratulations.
Oh, before I forget, Juan Pablo has a few things to say about cataloging and some books that arrived.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Well, as being part of the cataloging area of the library, I've just discovered a lot of books, a lot of fascinating collections that we have. When I started working at the library, I thought, am I gonna be able to read all these books? So many good books that we have there, but being part of the cataloging area, luckily, I discovered a lot of good material that we have. luckily I discovered a lot of good material that we have. And I encourage you guys to come over to the library and see what we have and participate in all of our events that we have there at the library, it's amazing. I'm very happy to be working in that area of cataloging. Was it in the last session that Anex explained to you guys how to what I do at the catalog area? It's not only putting the cover, but the subject and organize it in our collections. So if you want to come over, I'm very happy to show you how I do my job.
The free books.
I have free books for you, if you're coming.
Thank you, Juan Pablo, for your presentation.
Thank you.
And we will be visiting you. Do you work at all of the libraries or just the main library here?
Right now, at the main library.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a suggestion. Now that you mention it, that is very wonderful and great books, we should find something to do like a Book of the Week or something and put it in and talk about the book and do a live presentation and invite people to the community to read that specific book or the books.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do it on social media.
Nothing, thank you.
Just great job.
Thank you, Christian.
About acquisitions, you're involved in cataloging, how are the acquisitions, how are the books chosen?
How the books are chosen?
Yeah, how do you choose which books to buy, for instance, is there a committee or do you?
Well, as you might know, every month we change our collection, we dedicate that collection to whatever we're celebrating on that month, so we try to keep it updated. By, for instance, this month, we're dedicating it to Juneteenth and Pride Month. So our collection is based on things that we need, of course, and also things to be replaced or that we need to, it need to be updated, of course. So that's how.
And I'm just going to chime in, so every community is different, for Sonoyda we have the mystery authors, so we know that's going to be like Sonoyda, we're going to have Stuart Woods, we're going to have Craig Johnson, Toubac, also mystery writers, a little bit of the desert. So it's, every community is different and what I see from the community, that's what I that's what staff lets me know and we order from there. The good thing we have, we had quite a bit of money for books this year and next year as well. Rio Rico is very eclectic, they will read a little bit of everything, so it's either they want biographies, they want military, they want warfare, or they want the new young adult romance or young romance, they also, the children's books are very, it's a good collection, the collections are getting better in all the libraries as well. And just as Juan was saying, if there's information from the 80s that's not relevant, that's going to go away. And we're going to replace those titles and that's what we're doing right now too as well, we're going, I'm going, I'm going through the shelves in Nogales right now, just looking at because there's some great information that needs to be updated. Pluto's not a planet anymore, we have to take those books out. I know, I know, I know there's going to be some people that are, you know, Pluto is a planet, that's fine. So I mean, it's just, it's a variety and it depends on the community as well. So we will read and we will, and whatever is recommended by the community, that's also what we get.
Hello, thank you for what you do, been there, done that. So I can see how tedious it is, it could be, I did it without computers and without the internet back in the day, so it's tough. So congrats. Thank you, Omar.
Great job, Juan Pablo, and I'm just thinking about what Santos just said about a Book of the Month. All this year, Daphne Russell from Books Save Lives and I have been working in the schools from kindergarten elementary and middle school, we haven't worked with any of the high schools, but one of the things that we've, that I've noticed and we've noticed is that students are coming into our school system from Mexico with no English. And what we found is that they gravitated to the bilingual books. And I mean, just some really exciting situations where like Ronnie Capen's books, Los Remedios de mi Nana, Los Remedios de mi Tata, and Traulito and everything like this, and they could, they could make connections to them. A middle school student last week said because we were able to order books for the students, they could choose their own books, and they said, oh, I want these two books or these three books for my grandparents so that they can read them to, you know, to my brothers and sisters. And so then with bilingual books that are relevant to our community, if when you do your Book of the Month, you could include a bilingual book, that's the direction that we're taking to be able to make sure that students continue their academics in their first language and, you know, make that hop over into learning and expanding their vocabulary and concepts in English, so that would be wonderful. Thank you, Juan Pablo. Item number seven, future agenda items, does anybody have anything to add? Would anybody like something on the next agenda that it's not presently on this one? Nothing, we'll just keep our same agenda, okay. Item number eight, the date of our next meeting is August 14th, 2024. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn?
Okay, is there a second? Is a motion, a second to adjourn, we have adjourned this meeting at 10:38, I think I beat all of Marcelino's. Thank you very much.